Yes. Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Finance Subcommittee for Monday, November 18, 2019, to order. Madam Secretary, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Coogan?
Yep.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, here.
Would you please join me for a salute to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, to match general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21E, so to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Good afternoon, everybody. First, order of business is the discussion on the FY 21 budget calendar. General over to Dr. Malone.
Sure. So, tonight we come forward to the committee to present what we call a tentative dynamic of the changes in times budget calendar for the coming fiscal year. As you can see, this mimics what we've done the last several years, starting with Administrator, Department Head Survey with principals and department heads to look at budget priorities. We then meet and talk and narrow and bring that forward to the School Committee concurrent with continual training around what zero-based looks like, especially for the new principals and other new department heads. And then, we'll hold meetings, get to a place where we have a budget. We present a proposed budget to the School Committee, and then work with the School Committee on developing a budget and hold all the meetings that we have, getting us to, under the new charter, the new meetings that are part of the process, and get us to a May-to-June City Council final budget approval with the city.
General motion to forward to the full committee the proposed FY 21 budget calendar.
Thank you.
Made by Mr. Coogan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Martin. Any discussion on the calendar, General?
No.
No? Discussion, no? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next item is the discussion on the end-of-year report. Mr. Almeida?
Hi, good evening. So, what you have in front of you is, I just gave a quick memo with an update on the FY 19 and FY 20 end-of-year report. So, on October 3, 2019, we submitted the end-of-year report to the state. The report for FY 19, we did not meet the net school spending requirement by a total of In FY 20, we have not met the net school spending requirement by a total of $1,859,687. The shortfall is attributed to health insurance, transportation, and charter school expenses. Please keep in mind that the, and I'll go over the two pages behind as well, but please keep in mind that the state still reviews the information that was submitted. We typically will hear back in January to February timeframe as to what the finalized number is. The figures could change up or down based on their review, as it did this past year with the charter school and school choice, because those numbers changed in the meantime from now till then, from when we submitted originally, till their review. So, at that time, the state will provide us with a letter telling us where we are with the requirement, and, you know, depending on where we are, have us work with the city to narrow, to close the gap on the amount. So, would you like me to go over the totals, or?
Yeah, sure.
So, we have all the information.
Sure.
Some of the questions may be answered.
Sure. So, the first page, let's see, the first page is the FY 19 net school spending. So, you can see that net school spending for the School Committee totaled $10183,465. Net school spending for the city or town totaled $47,252,883, for a total of $147,436,348. The required net school spending for FY 19 was $149,318,108, showing the shortfall of the $1.8 million dollars, as a reference. So, that, so, starting with that $1.8, that $1.8 million carries into FY 20. So, that $1.8 million gets added to the FY 20 requirement of $162,111,259, for a total of just under $164,163,993,019. Budgeted for the School Committee at this time is $108,623,981, and for the city or town is $53,509,351, for a total of the $162,133,332. So, when you compare the $163,993,019 versus the $162,133,332, that's where we stand currently budgeted for FY 20, $1,859,687.
So, I guess my first question is, what is the breakdown specifically for health insurance in FY 19?
In that point?
You lumped transportation, you lumped health insurance, and charter school. So, what's the breakdown in 19 for that?
So, it is one, it's roughly $1.2 million for insurance.
So, that is, is that reflected here, no?
No. It, so you're trying to get to the $1.8 million, right, Mr. Costa?
Right. I want to know what the breakdown is.
So, I'll give you the exact ratio. So, the breakdown is?
Well, the reason I'm asking is if it's transportation, it's not net school spending.
Correct.
If it's health insurance, it is.
Correct, correct.
Therefore, there's a cleaner solution for that than there is transportation.
Correct. So, alright, so, transportation is $552,959.
In FY 19?
Yes, sir.
Was, say it again, $5,000?
$552,959.
That's health insurance.
That's transportation.
Excuse me, that's transportation.
Transportation. The charter school, school choice sped, we lumped that all together in that assessment piece. That's $124,665.
And the balance on?
And then, the balance is insurance, $1,204,136.
$1,204,000?
$136.
$136.
Yep. And that, and for insurance, and let me just, that's, that includes property and liability insurance, that includes workers' comp, because that all gets included in that one category on the end-of-year report.
And breakdown in 20? Well, we don't, well, we should know what it was carried for.
Essentially, that's the carryover. It's the carryover, correct.
But we're trending short anyway.
We're actually a little bit, it came down a little bit from the $1.8 million, from the $1,881. So, FY 19, it was $1,881, and FY 19, it's $1,859. So, it came down a bit.
But we were budgeted at $162,133,332. That's city contribution and?
That's all in.
That's all?
That's all in, right.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So, well, let me open it up to my colleagues, and I'll save my questions for after.
Sure.
Any questions, Mr. Martin, or Mr. Coogan?
Well, that $800,000 we kept talking about with the city, is that in that?
That's part of this, yes.
That's, so that's a million other than that, right?
Yes.
There is another million, roughly.
Roughly, correct, correct.
So, it's another million?
Correct.
And if we get that, will be made whole for 19 and 20?
Yes, sir.
Yes, for 19, yes. For 19, and they won't owe it for?
Well, if it's carried forward, that doesn't make 20 go away.
No.
Because our assessment was higher than what we were budgeting. Mr. Martin?
The FY 20, 20, that's what we're in right now.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, we're not, it's not that we didn't meet net school spending, because of the fact that we have the entire year still to go.
Correct, correct. It's, I said budgeted, that's just where we stand currently. You know, where we wind up at the end of the year, things can change, and?
You know, big time.
Correct.
But the FY 19, that $1.8 million, where did that come from?
Insurance.
Okay.
The assessments and transportation.
What?
The assessments, charter school, sped, school choice, and transportation.
And how did they come about?
How did it come about?
Yeah, how did the insurance amount come about?
We spent less in insurance than we originally budgeted.
I'm just trying to get it on the record.
Yep.
Because people here looking at that, this is, whoa, wait a minute, think a minute. In 19, you didn't, you didn't meet your net school spending, right? Well, then there's a reason why, because of the fact that the insurance costs were less than, and the other items, the tuition charter schools, is less than what we anticipated, okay? So, as a result of that now, that means we still have to, to meet net school spending, that amount has to be expended.
Correct.
Of which case then, but FY 19 is now over, of which case this now brings it over to FY 20, in there, of which case then, in reality, it's sort of like a blessing in disguise, one, the fact that we didn't spend the money, because we didn't need to, on the healthcare and the charter school tuitions, but it's coming into FY 20, and now we have not only our regular budget of FY 20, but we have this additional money to it, to be able to be expended on in FY 20.
Yes, sir.
It's too bad I'm not going to be around, but it's, where is that money going to go? I hope it goes for more paraprofessionals in the, you know, in the elementary classes, not necessarily tied to a, an IEP, but assigned to a teacher.
I would say this, Mr. Martin, you had a better shot if that happened, and had the health insurance projections been more accurate, because that would have come over at the beginning of last fiscal year as actual funding that we could have used for those positions.
But that's what it is.
To have it come over now as one-time money in order to close the gap, I don't know that we would build that much money into positions, because then the following year, you're going to have a fiscal cliff. But I know what you're saying, I'm just saying that it is a blessing in disguise, we didn't spend it. However, if it had been projected a little leaner, again, it's a projection, so you can't really fault anything for it, they're taking a guess, but that money would have come over in direct funding for education, we could have used it for positions at the beginning of FY 19. We could have done some of those positions, but the likelihood that we'll be able to do that going forward, we'll have to wait and stay tuned to what's going on at the state level right now with the Student Opportunity Act money, and we'll have a better, a better sense of that. But, can I just add, I'm sorry, will you also have a response?
Just, we can debate this for a while, but the fact of the matter is that, if you don't change, you're going to be exactly where you are.
Yeah.
This time next year.
Absolutely.
In there, as far as the student, you know, increase in student learning, in there. I won't go in and talk, there's not a place for it.
No, no.
At this, at this point in time, but indeed, the fact that this would help in hiring people, now next, the year after that, year after that, I mean, heck, we have so much grants and stuff like that, if they dry up, that part is going to be at a minimum. But yet, the students are going to be the ones that, you still have to educate them, in there. Anyway, I, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Almeida, have we had discussions with Ms. Sahadi?
Preliminary.
To find out?
Preliminary.
What the plan is going forward, because these numbers are starting to pile up, so?
At this point, preliminary, and from their standpoint, you know, we have to wait until, you know, it's certified by, the numbers are certified by the state.
Is there any disagreement with, at least the health insurance?
Slight.
Slight, there is a slight disagreement at this time.
Where are we with that?
Still in discussion.
Right. We're in discussion. We've made our position known.
Okay. So, what is our position on it?
$1 million.
Okay. And what is theirs?
Zero.
Zero. They don't think they owe us?
Nope.
Because they feel like they've expended? There are a lot of money on?
No. So, they, they feel like that their insurance figure, the insurance figure should be what was budgeted previously. I was given a different insurance figure by, by the city when I was putting the insurance information together.
So, they feel as though they budgeted right to the penny perfectly, and that we used the wrong number, therefore, there's a shortage.
Correct, correct. And I believe that the number that is in there currently that was given to me right before the submission.
Right.
Is more accurately reflects what?
And you'll have the backup documents for the committee regarding what number was sent over from the city as to what they were going to use?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Email, thread, something like that?
Okay, absolutely.
Alright, so it seems like that'll be easy to clean up. Listen, if Ms. Sahadi was that accurate, that she knew exactly what we were going to spend on health insurance to the penny, then, then that's great, but I think that's, that's a discussion we'll, I guess we'll have to continue to have.
We're having open dialogue with them now.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just, I, especially on a line like that, historically, it's had some legal room both ways.
Yeah, yep.
To suggest now that they don't owe us anything because what we should have expended?
And let me, and let me, it's not anything, it's, they feel they owe us $800,000.
Yep.
They don't feel that they owe us the million.
Okay.
So, just, just to be, just to be clear.
We'll all come together?
Give them a C8.
Not yet.
Our A8 coming.
Right, so, so we'll get together with them, we'll show them the supporting documents, we'll have a conversation, and, listen, the reality is, it's net school spending, if it's eligible, it needs to be met. It's an obligation by law, so there's no dispute on that.
Correct.
The question becomes how we got to that number, and, you know, what kind of funding was provided, and so we'll have that in the conversation. That's the great thing about the net school spending number, is it is what it is.
Correct.
And so, there's only so many things that get put in there that make it up. It's either direct expense or an indirect that's been agreed upon.
Exactly.
So, we'll hammer that out. I just wanted to figure out if we've had these conversations, if they're on board, they're not on board. I'd ask if we could get that meeting scheduled, you know, sooner rather than later, so that we can have an idea of what the plan will be going forward, because if there's a disagreement on that million dollars, that carries into 20.
Correct, 20, you mean 21.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, 21.
Yep.
Well, it carries into 20, but potentially into 21 as well, if we don't meet it. It just keeps rolling until it's met, up to 5%.
Yep.
Right. So, do you know the percentage of, so, we're at 98.7% of net school spending?
I will do that at the moment, right now.
Well, 1.2%, 1.26% below, right?
Yep.
So, 98.74?
Roughly, yeah, that makes sense.
And that was 19, and right now, we don't know where we're, where we stand with 20, because we're in 20.
So, right now, we're at about 98.9, roughly 98.9, is roughly where we are for FY 20.
For 20, okay. Alright, just a couple of numbers to pay attention to going forward, but any further questions, comments regarding the end-of-year report, and? So, if you can send an email over?
The issue becomes a cycle waiting for the state certification.
Right.
Arbiter of truth.
Undoubtedly, undoubtedly. That happens every year, but the fact that we're that much off suggests that, I don't know that the state's going to rectify a $1 million gap in the end-of-year report. I don't think I've ever seen it, because the numbers speak for themselves, and so, there might be a little cleanup here and there, but unless somebody can correct me, have we ever seen that, a $1 million cleanup on an end-of-year report? No. So, it's going to be a discussion that needs to be had, right, to figure it out. I just don't want that lying out there. I think it should be addressed with some sort of acknowledgement or plan going forward as to how we'll address it.
So, maybe, could I start with an official memo following this meeting to the finance team, from the requesting discussion?
Or it should come from the committee?
Well, I would write it from the committee.
Oh, right.
From this, the Subcommittee Matt, I've been asked.
And that we're asking for a meeting to be convened, so that we can have further discussion about the end-of-year report.
Yeah. So, we'll write that and get that out tomorrow. Deb?
Just so that we can have the conversation.
Yeah, absolutely.
If it's a conversation that needs to happen down the road, then we'll have it down the road, but I just, sooner rather than later, so I think the sooner we make that known in writing, that we've met, we understand there's a difference, we want to sit down, bring your documentation, supporting documentation about what figure was, was to be used, we'll have ours, they can show us what they budgeted and why, and we'll have a conversation, and at the end of the day, we'll figure it all out.
Absolutely.
Does that meet with the Subcommittee?
Yeah, that sounds like it, sounds like it covers. I just didn't know why, I'm trying to think, the other day when we were talking, Mary, that came up, but I don't remember the million, the $800,000.
$800,000 came up.
So, what happened to the million, that we just didn't bring it up that day?
We didn't bring it up.
Okay. Because I was talking, it was $800,000, and, okay, no, okay, alright.
Alright. You don't need any action on that, do you?
No.
So, we have, so, we have this on the agenda for tonight, so, you have, it's not official, we have it on the agenda as a potential item. So, if it's something we want to refer to from here for discussion?
I'll say this, I'll take the will of my colleagues, as I usually do. My personal position is, until we have that meeting and we have more information.
Okay.
I'm not sure it necessarily needs to go to the full committee at this point.
We're not there.
But, we're not there yet. I think we still got to, so that, unless there's an appetite to send it, I just don't know, we have a whole lot to share until we have that meeting to throw, what the difference is, so, so, we'll work on that. Next item is the discussion for the Financial Manager job description.
So, I apologize, because I'm looking over your copies here, and it doesn't look like it's yellowed from one to the other. I thought, I thought it was yellowed, but apparently it's not, but I will tell you what the changes are, so.
Say, if you just highlight it.
And I apologize for that. So, with the impending retirement for Tom Rose, the Financial Manager, I took a look at the job description, and, you know, in so many words, I thought the job description was very, like, uni, I hate to, kind of like a unicorn. It's only, I don't know that we would get a potential applicant pool that we were looking, that, you know, that we would be looking for, for the job. And so, I'm, in so many words, trying to open it up so that, you know, we get some folks that, you know, fit the criteria, and, you know, with the, with the additional, oh, here.
Is this the one that we're supposed to?
This is the one that should have been highlighted.
This is the new one.
This is the new one, yeah. So, what I, so originally, what I tried to do was give you the old one, so that you could refer to the old one to compare against the new one. And so, what is highlighted in the one that I just handed out to you was the addition of, so, in the required qualifications section, section 1, 2, 3, fourth one down, we added BS in accounting, finance, business administration. In addition, the second line, master's degree in accounting or finance, or equivalent field experience in a municipal position or similar-sized organization, municipal or school department accounting and budgeting experience preferred, so?
So, wouldn't the BS in accounting, finance, and business management be?
It would, but we, I wanted to, I wanted to get both, so just in case there was a person that didn't have the master's degree, but had a bachelor's degree, and then had the work experience to go with it, I?
Alright, maybe I'm just seeing it different, but it looks like you're asking someone to have a master's and a ba, like, they would need a bachelor's.
So, 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 the master's degree?
BS in accounting or master's degree and equivalent or, I just think it needs to get cleaned up a little bit.
Alright, alright.
I'm looking at it, I'm thinking?
Well, in order to get a master's degree, you would need both. No, I agree, but I also want to leave it open to the possibility of somebody having just a bachelor's degree, but has the experience, because I think?
Or master's degree in accounting and/or equivalent field.
Okay, alright.
Which is, I think, just a little cleanup there.
I'll fix that, I'll fix that, okay. And then, the final thing we added, and everything else is the same, except for on page two, on the, on the second page, where it's in bold here, where it says, "The Superintendent of Schools reserves the right to waive a position qualification or determine that there is an acceptable alternative to that qualification. If the superintendent intends to waive a qualification, such intent will be shared with the following of the School Committee." So, it gives us some, some flexibility in, so? Well, it's, I, I think it just keeps, it keeps the whole pool open, gives us, you know, the best, gives us the ability to hire the best candidate possible to be able to?
It waives everything.
That language about the ability of superintendent to accept the current existence exists in other backgrounds?
Correct, I was just going to share that, but, so, just, just so the record's clear, that is language that's been used in prior job descriptions, because it gave the superintendent flexibility in the hiring process.
Correct.
That if there were candidates that met, that were strong in other areas, it may not have had all of these, that upon notification to the committee, that the committee could then decide if it was okay with waiving that particular qualification or not.
Yep.
It doesn't give the superintendent just a blanket to just waive it, it was to be brought to the committee for, for review.
Okay.
Mr. Coogan, Mr. Martin?
Yes, go back to required qualifications.
Yep.
The last bullet.
Yes.
Educate a license as a school business administrator, that's fine. Are eligible for such license, that's fine.
Okay.
First one, have to wait for it, but the last four words, preferred but not required. What's not required?
The license as a school business administrator. It's not, it's not required.
What's that?
The license as a school business administrator, it's not required for this position, but it's preferred.
You mean to say you could hire someone who's not certified by the Department of Education?
Yeah, you hired, originally, when I was in this position, you hired, you hired, well, plus, originally, you hired, when you hired me, I didn't have a license, and I worked, you know, towards the license, so it gives, gives you that, that flexibility.
Right. You don't need a license to be in this position.
Correct, correct.
Because it's not the business office.
Hopefully, I have to, I have to have it.
And I can't hear when you're both are saying.
You don't need a license for the financial manager position.
Correct.
So, it's a non-certified role, but we're saying we want somebody that will be working towards it.
Okay. The only other issue I have with it is the salary to be negotiated, because there should be a range there.
Okay.
You know, I think we have an established range for that position already, don't we?
No.
Then maybe we should consider setting one at some point.
Do you have any, any preference, committee?
What do we know?
Well, I think, I think?
Oh, it's, we've, so, currently, we're?
I think the committee would?
Currently, we're about 75 is where we are right now.
So, I think what I would do is entertain a motion to refer it to the full committee, and if the full committee, we can?
Okay.
Determine what a, a range should be.
Okay.
Unless other people don't feel that necessary, I think it's, you should probably give one range, just to, what's that?
I would just go 70 to 80, then.
Well, and that may be the case, but it's going to have to be voted on by the full committee before it gets put on the job description.
I'd rather walk in with something written there for discussion than leave it blank and have a discussion.
So, we'll make it known that that's the administration, that based on this meeting, the recommended range would be, you know, 70 to 80, 70 to 80,000, and we'll see what happens with the committee.
Is that enough?
Yeah, well, that's fine.
Is there a motion to refer it to the full committee, the job description for the financial manager with the added salary range proposed by the administration, or maybe it goes without it?
Or what did you say?
Or maybe the motion's made without the range, and the committee determines, but?
What committee?
I'm sorry, Joe?
What committee?
The full body. It's going to go, it's going to go for discussion tonight, Joe.
Okay, I understand that part, but, you know, as, as is without the 70 to 80?
It could go either way. It could go with the recommendation of the range, or if you or Mr. Coogan are uncomfortable making that motion with the range in it, leave it blank and let the committee decide this evening what that range should be. But it's only a proposed recommended range from the administration. I just didn't want to hamstring either of you in making a motion with a salary range if you weren't comfortable with it, because that would have to ultimately be decided by the committee anyway. by the committee anyway, so it can, the motion can be made either way to get before the committee.
Okay.
Or it can be a motion, it just be left as negotiated, whatever the will is, I'm just trying to get it before the committee so that it can get approved tonight, and that you folks can post and?
Thank you.
Start the hiring process.
Well, the only thing I, is that range, 70 to 80, in range with what other towns and cities are doing with financial managers, or do you know, has anybody even looked at what other people are paying?
It's called different things in different districts, business manager.
So, Coogan, come to the table, please.
What's the salary like, Tom, for those guys?
We're still in the process of collecting those salaries, we anticipate a posting for the end of the year or the first month of next year.
Then I would say go with that, negotiate it till we see what everybody else is paying for these kind of people, and have an idea, that way, we come in with something that was taught and that we're paying, we're not out of line, where we should be.
The structure's different based on size of the?
As negotiated, then when you find a candidate, you bring it in, you have to back up that or you're ready to go. Is that okay?
Yeah, it's just a little hard sometimes when you post a job without a range.
Right, they might not know what they're getting into.
So, if we say competitive salary, and we get someone from Boston, they think they're going to be making 120, you know what I mean?
Okay, they can go with the salary range of 70 to 80,000.
Let's go with that, then, with 70 to 80.
And it's a start in salary.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm okay with it.
That's fine.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Coogan to refer the job description for financial manager with the suggested salary range of 70 to 80,000 dollars to the full committee, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Martin, is any further discussion on that, John? Roll call?
Mr. Coogan?
Yep.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Is there any new business topics for discussion that cannot reasonably be anticipated by the chair 48 hours prior to a meeting? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So?
Made by Mr. Martin, there is a second, second by Mr. Coogan, roll call?
Mr. Coogan?
Yep.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Meeting stands adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.